I just don't want it to die right in the middle.
I just don't want it to die right in the middle.
I just don't want it to die right in the middle.
I'd like to welcome all to this evening's regular board meeting, the Lakeview Public Schools Board of Education today, Tuesday, June 18, 2024, 7:30 PM, at the boardroom at the Wheat Educational Campus. At this time, I'd like to call the attention of the board the minutes, I'm sorry, the minutes of the regular meeting of June 4, 2024.
With their approval.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Martin, support by Mr. Bear, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, do you have any public communication this evening?
I do not.
Okay, Board of Education and Administration comments. Well, it was the end of another fine year. It seems like all the kiddos are on with their summers and the graduates are on their way with their steps in life, so it's been a, I would call a very successful year once again, so things are looking good. Any other comments from the board?
My son finished kindergarten at Ardmore, he enjoyed it. First grade, next thing my daughter's gonna start preschool at the Wheat building, so.
I did notice that there's some good progress over the athletic complex with the field and turf and lots of things there.
Yep.
From the board.
They are done.
Stay cool.
There you go, exactly. Administration, any comments?
Absolutely. As you mentioned, the school year ended, but now many things start anew as we go into the summer. Lots of construction moving forward and multiple sites, deep cleaning of all the schools started Monday, a week ago, right after school was done. Keeping our facilities maintained and cleaned is important in the long term, and these projects come every summer, and I appreciate our custodians and our environmental clean employees and a bunch of our contractors that do preventive maintenance activities throughout the summer, getting those things started and rolling. The state budget is still underway in negotiations with the big school issue taking front and center. I know the board is aware and our employees are also aware. The Michigan Public School Employees Retirement System has become fluid and funded in the healthcare portion of it, and as a result, the money that would normally be spent by the state to pay for that OPEB, the other benefits portion of the retirement system for all school employees, the school groups have all aligned and said, that MIPSers money, Michigan Public School Employees money, that was going to healthcare, if it's not necessary to go to healthcare, then it should go to the other part, which is the pension side, which isn't fully funded yet, or reduce the cost that's going to what the districts pay back to the state. We get money from our people foundation allowance and we turn right back around and pass it back to the state for MIPSers contribution for employee pensions. So that could be up to 7% cost savings for every district in Michigan, 7% of our payroll cost, and that's a big number at Lakeview alone, and that it's a big number in every district. So when you have all school groups aligned, the school boards association, the principals, the superintendents, the union groups, when you have all of them aligned, it's usually the right thing to do. So we have our legislators being contacted to say, do this. A bill has been introduced for just that purpose by Matt Colasar, who is a chairman of a policy committee. He's a Democrat from the Plymouth area. Our local reps have indicated their support to me, at least verbally, so I think that this might be something that actually occurs. I know the board is aware. We assumed a 2% reduction to that cost in the budget you're gonna approve later, hopefully. If it's seven, that's a significant amount of money that would be available, not as an expense to MIPSers, but for something else in Lakeview, and that's true for every district across the state. So get informed, let your feelings be known, research it. If you have questions, anybody watching on YouTube, if you have questions about it, we certainly can answer those. As far as what is that to Lakeview? It's $2 million, basically, and in 60-some-million-dollar budget, that's a significant amount of money that can be used for other things that are school, classroom connected, not a payment for future pension needs. And finally, I want to share, we don't often get the chance, but now that we're in the summer and many of the things that go on in the summer go on in this building behind the scenes, and so some of the central administrative staff, the central support staff, like in technology and enrollment and special education, you know, reports that get done and all of the background, the preventive maintenance activities that get done, audit starts in the summer and all the business office staff get, you know, go crazy for a few weeks. They don't often get recognized when we talk about the end of the school year, but the reality is that whole group of folks keep us efficient, compliant, and effective for all the other things that happen, and they deserve a little thank you and kudos, and I offer that up for this afternoon. And then finally, safe travels. We do have a large group in Spain and France. I don't know exactly where they are at this moment, but they're out there in Europe.
They were in Versailles today. I get regular updates. My wife and daughter happened to be on that trip with Ms. Van Pieren and.
Somebody else from this table who's missing, yes. Sponsors, they are. They're sponsors.
They're heading to Spain tomorrow. They jump on a train tomorrow morning and eight-hour ride and.
Once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, I think, and our intention long term is to have this occur every other year so that anybody who's in high school that wants to have the chance to do that gets a chance to do that, and I think as it's successful and we don't get any crazy COVID things going on or other, you know, political implications that are too much, we'll be able to have staff who want to sponsor and then have kids get that chance. It's a lot like the Washington DC thing, you know, that you're never gonna be able to do everything you do in an organized trip like that if you're just in a family event. So I think the folks who put that together and then those who are, you know, courageous enough to take it on and go for it. That's all I've got.
Yeah, as the phone call came in from my wife today at 3:25 PM, which was six hours ahead, so it's like 9:30 there, I said, hey, what's going on? Avery's downstairs with her friends, they're playing some board games, and she goes, I have my pajamas on, I'm exhausted, because it's kind of a nonstop trip, but she said, it's, as Mr. Paulson said, once in a lifetime, she's like, I love it, we wouldn't be able to see all the things that we saw, but she said that Ms. Bowen, who is, you know, the French teacher who's on this trip, every night she goes back up to the room and she writes down, okay, here's the things we liked, here's the things that we want to see corrected for next time. She's keeping a journal because they said there's some things, if they do this again, they want to improve upon it and make it a better experience for the kids. So I think that's good that, you know, there's enough buy-in from the sponsors to say, if we're gonna continue to do this, we want it to be better every time we go. So it's, they're having a good time and, you know, FaceTiming me when they're riding down the river and showing me the Eiffel Tower with the Olympic rings on it, and like Mr. Paulson said, once in a lifetime.
Cool. Anything else? Nope. I know you had mentioned construction. You know, obviously, things are going at the high schools. We saw recently, how about the wrap-up of Harmon and Greenwood? How's that coming along?
We will be done for the start of school. We have metal panels coming in the first part of August for the exterior. The interior stuff is gonna be done probably within the next two weeks. Furniture's coming the first part of July, and then we will plan.
Two new schools, two new principals in those schools.
Oh, yeah.
So, unique situation for those two new administrators coming on board. And as an aside, we've, you hired the last, you know, the first one of those, Greenwood, at the last meeting, and we are getting close to the final on selection on Harmon's principal as well, so that should be on your July board meeting action.
Cool. Any final comments from the board? Nope. All right, consent agenda, item A, Michigan Association of School Boards membership.
Membership in the MAS B is considered annually, and requests for approval is being recommended to the board at this time. Total membership fees, 2024 and three are there, and for dues for this year coming up.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the payment of the Michigan Association of School Boards dues for the 2024-25 school year in the amount of $8,157.78.
Support. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Mr. Asia. This is a consent agenda item. There is no discussion on the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, item A, changes in personnel.
I will be pinching tonight for Madam Wozelle Van Pieren. Tonight, Administration is bringing forth the following changes in personnel since the last presentation to the Board of Education on June 4th. Resignations, Ryan Spencer, Lakeview High School Auto Shop Co-op, effective June 7th. Carrie Van Buskirk, Wheat Preschool Co-op, effective June 7th. Marissa Massey, Princeton Elementary School Teacher and Lakeview Public Schools Multi-Site Latchkey Coordinator, effective August 1st. Returning coach and sponsor, Kevin Nugent, Lakeview High School Varsity Girls Volleyball Coach. New coach sponsor for the 23-24 school year, Autumn Cliffle, Lakeview High School Softball Girls JV Coach. And new coach sponsor for the 24-25 school year, Holly Duque, Lakeview High School Huskets Varsity Coach.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the changes in personnel as presented.
Supporting.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me. On implementation, item A, bid pack number nine, change order, glycol replacement at Lakeview High School.
Do we have anybody here tonight?
No.
No. No. Thank you.
This evening, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following change order related to the replacement of. change order related to the replacement of glycol within the HVAC system at Lakeview High School. An April administration was notified by Barton Mallow Builders that the existing glycol in the HVAC system was not sufficient to support the new equipment in addition that is being installed in construction. This required getting both partners in architecture and the engineering firm Peter Bassel Associates to develop a solution and submitting that to Contrast Mechanical, who is the mechanical contractor for Bid PAC nine. Administration directed Barton Mallow Builders to get a price from Contrast. Contrast was asked to break out the labor costs from the material costs. The labor was provided as a not-to-exceed price. Contrast submitted pricing that was reviewed by PBA, PIA, and Barton Mallow Builders. All found pricing to be appropriate for the additional scope of work. The majority of the cost is replacement of the glycol for the new and larger system. Therefore, administration recommends approval of an increase in contract through change order to Contrast Mechanical in the amount of $101,363.63.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the change order and contrast increase to the contrast mechanical in the amount of $101,363.63 for glycol replacement at Lakeview High School as presented.
Support. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Martin, support by Mr. Asia, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Bid PAC number 10, change order, Lakeview High School Athletic Field Additional Electrical Work.
This evening is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following change order related to an additional electrical feed at the Lakeview High School Athletic Field. In May, administration was notified by Barton Mallow Builders that the existing power feeds at the Lakeview High School Athletic Field were not sufficient to support the new press box that is being installed. This required getting the electrical engineer, PBA, and partners in architecture to develop a plan for the work to appropriately support the added feed in a new design. Once PBA and PIA provided a potential solution, administration directed Barton Mallow Builders to get a price from Dehant Electric, the electrical contractor for Bid Package 10. Dehant submitted pricing that was reviewed by PBA, PIA, and Barton Mallow Builders. They found all pricing to be appropriate for the additional scope of work. Therefore, administration recommends the approval of increase in contract through change order to Dehant Electric in the amount of $38,847.83.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the change order and contract increase to Dehant Electric in the amount of $38,847.83 for additional electrical work at the Lakeview High School Athletic Field as presented. Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Taylor, support by Ms. Martin, discussion on the motion.
They just had to run additional feed from our power source out there just because of the amount of power that's needed in the new press box. So, just a new design.
Yeah, we had to increase the amperage on the panel as well. The amperage was 400. We had to go to 450 amps with the size of the new press box.
What kind of stuff would be drawing that much juice in the press box?
I think it's, it's just the, what's that? Yeah, it's the, Mr. Paulson's air conditioner.
There is?
Yeah. I mean, there's low HVAC in there just to kind of keep the temperature. And it's bigger. I mean, it's 60 feet long. The other one was about 35. So it's significantly bigger. It's got more power than.
Well, that's all LED. That's low there, but. All right, cool. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Onto business. Item A, 2024-2025 Original Budget Resolutions, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, N, H, as noted.
All right, this evening, the administration recommends that the Board of Education consider the 24-25 original budget resolution for the general fund, capital funds, debt fund, food service funds, student activity funds, the 2020 bond fund, 2020 bond debt fund, 2022 bond fund, the 2022 bond debt fund for 24-25. The administration projects that the general fund revenue is approximately 64.2 million and expenses of 64.1 million, which continues to include student support services for learning loss, social and emotional needs, safety, security, along with a continued focus on providing a high quality of programs and staff. As Carl talked about earlier, there's many unknowns as we begin 24-25, including the actual costs to close the year of 23-24. However, the outlook does look favorable for the upcoming year, even though the state of Michigan's revenue projections are lower than previous estimates. The state's year end is September 30, and although the state's general purpose fund and the state's school aid fund have significant available resources, state leaders have not passed the final budget at this time. The district is required to have an original budget in place by July 1. Lakeview, like all school districts in the state, must base their budget work on state revenue assumptions, particularly as it relates to the student foundational allowance. Revenue is also heavily dependent on the student headcount each year, which is how the state revenues are delivered to the local schools. From a revenue perspective, the district has assumed a 90-10 blend for student membership in about a 2.25%, which is the conservative estimate, or approximately 215 per pupil increase in an increase of enrollment of about 25, as we discussed about two meetings ago. This alongside with other miscellaneous state aid payments, it is projected to yield an increase of about 1.52 million year-over-year. This budget is conservative, as I said before, as we wait for the three branches of government to approve it. Many of the federal and state grants related to the aftermath of COVID have been expended and therefore removed from this budget. There's a little bit of S R 3 left, so a decrease of approximately 1.6 million from the proposed 2023-24 budget. On the expenditure side, salaries have been approximated for four new hires, two in the middle school, two in the high school, and the annual salary adjustments for employees per their contracts. This will yield a year-over-year cost of approximately 1.1 million. The medical and prescription costs are projected a slight increase, 5% on the medical side of premiums, and there is a little bit of offset from several employees migrating to the no-cost-per-employee shared high deductible HSA plan. Currently, the legislation is debating the MIPSers, which is what Carl has spoken about earlier. The budget is assuming a 2% buy-down, obviously could be greater than that. Also, three new curriculum initiatives, as we had approved in prior meetings, were adopted, which approximately is about $380,000. Billing operations have been increased to about $115,000 to reflect contract increases, service needs, so on and so forth. And then this budget proposes a capital projects transfer of 1 million, continuing to provide for things like technology, you know, replacement of roofs, and then the work that's done outside of the bond work that needs to be completed. The district has had good fiscal policies, improved spending over the past few years, and it has had significant growth to the fund balance. Although this budget is conservative, because of many uncertainties with significant reductions in grant funding and other revenue, the district does continue to support students' social and emotional and educational needs. The administration projects at this time to have a slight increase of the fund balance of about $67,000 for the 24-25 year, closing at about $10.2 million. Capital Projects Fund is proposed to have growth due to the fund balance for the general fund, for the 1 million that we had talked about prior, because most of the major maintenance and construction work is through bond funds. There would be minimal activity in this fund. We do have about 1.7 million in this fund right now to cover the cost in excess of the bond. A Capital Projects Fund would close the year at about 4.1 million. Food Service Fund, the revenue is projected to remain consistent at about 2.25 million. The fund has had a significant increase due to the fund balance over the past few years. As we talked about before, the state has a excess fund balance requirement, so that if it grows too much, you have to spend down. This year, the spend down plan is about $344,000, mostly in capital expenditures, equipment, maintenance, upkeep within the facilities. So we're expecting to have an ending fund balance of about $427,108 going forward. Student Activity Fund, these are monies raised from various groups, and then we're expected to have a closing fund balance, which is pretty consistent with last year, about $455,000. And then the debt fund, and then the bond debt fund for '20 and '22 includes several projects that are taking place this year, as we've been talking about. The 2020 bond debt fund is expected to have an ending balance of about $421,000. The 2022 fund will be completely exhausted at year end, and then it's gonna have a debt fund of about $391,000. And then the actual debt fund outside of the bonds is proposed to have a year-end balance of about $438,000. Therefore, the administration recommends the adoption of the 24-25 original budget appropriations as presented. Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the 2024-25 original budget appropriations resolution as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Taylor, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to be 2023-2024 Final Budget Resolutions, General Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Debt Fund.
All right, this evening, the administration recommends that the Board of Education consider the final general fund, capital funds, food service funds, 2020 bond fund, and 2022 bond fund budgets. In the general fund, the resolution, there's a minimal change from the amended budget that was brought forth to the board in April of '24, with minor line item adjustments between some functions, projected revenue and expenses of approximately 64.6 million and then 62 million respectively. This budget does, as we had mentioned, contain a transfer of 2.5 million, continuing to provide for the things like Chromebooks or technology, roofs, anything left over from the bond. The Capital Projects Fund is expected to grow for '23-24 as a result of that 2,000, or 2 million, $2.5 million transfer, and end the year at approximately 4.89 million. The Debt Service Fund is consistent with the 23-24 budget, the original. And then the Food Service, as before, is projected to have an increase to about 2.25 million. And again, the spend down plan for this year, ending '22-23 is 320 versus the 344 that we had saw on the other budget, to end the day at $568,000. Student Activity Fund is consistent with the original budget. And the 2020 bond fund will be exhausted, the 22, I'm sorry, the bond debt fund and then the 2022 bond fund, the 2022 bond fund includes several projects that are taking place through the year. The 2020, like I said, is fully utilized, and the bond debt fund is expected to have an ending balance of $458,000, and the 22 bond fund of approximately $10,802, with ending fund balances of 2020 and 2022 approximately $458,000 and $542, respectively. The ending balances are consistent with the original budget. Therefore, the administration recommends the adoption of the 24-25 budget appropriation resolution to include general fund, capital projects, food service, 2020 bond fund, and 2022 bond fund as presented.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the 2023-24 Final Budget Appropriations Resolution as presented.
Support. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Taylor, support by Mr. Bear, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in.
Yes? It needs to be changed to 24-25.
No, it's 2024.
This is.
This is the final on this current.
Oh, okay.
Oh, farther up. Farther up, it's the mistake.
Oh, okay.
24-25 in the comments above, but the action item is right.
Really noted.
Good catch.
Any other comments?
I would just offer, you know, I think 18 months ago, we were having conversations at this table about, you know, the cost of bond projects, the intentions of what we wanted to do and how we thought it would play out for you to carry forward on things like the field, things like the auditorium and the pool. And, you know, obviously, you see in this final budget here and then the next year's budget, the Capital Projects Fund, that's gonna be at 5 million close of this year, another million going in for next year. I think we have pretty high confidence that these projects are gonna get accomplished, and we're gonna have money for future things that are going to still be needed, although that's not gonna solve the longer-term issue of roofs and heating and cooling system or equipment that's not been included in, you know, because, I would just make it, you know, history. 2019 spring, conversation about the bond that was $65 million worth of a recommended, you know, request, through the table talk and other things throughout that month or two, it turned into the 54 million that ultimately went to the voters. So that $11 million gap was out there four years, five years ago. That was pre-COVID prices. So there is gonna be longer-term, some need to look at financing large projects down the road. But this, at least, we know, at least better confidence with what's 5 million out of this year, 6 million through next year, available to finish what we started, and you already approved, and then look at what is the next year or two down the road for computers, switching equipment, other internal things that oftentimes aren't seen but are necessary, right? So I thank you for the confidence in, you know, two years ago and a year ago, because it's a little bit, really, Carl? And we understand that, but I think now we can say with a little better confidence that these figures are gonna carry us through for another year, two years, and then we have time to look into the future. Fair enough?
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to requests for closed session, student expulsion, long-term suspension recommendation, 2023-24 CP.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the request for closed session to consider the long-term suspension expulsion for student 2023-24 CP.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bear, support by Ms. Martin. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bear?
Aye.
Ms. Martin, aye. Mr. Asia?
Yes.
Oh, I skipped Mr. Miners. Mr. Miners?
Aye.
Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye. Okay, we're taking action to go into closed session. It is 7:59. We will go into recess until 8:05. And I asked at the family, the legal guardians and the student remain in the boardroom here at 8:05. And for the people watching out on the web, this will be the end of the meeting. As far as the broadcast goes, if you're interested in seeing what transpires here at the end of the meeting, you'd have to come on site. And it's, we don't know if there will be action or not at this point, so we're in recess at 7:59.
Who turns off the?